We will reconvene from our closed session and we need to certify that please, so we need a motion to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters, lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, were discussed in the closed session to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by council.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made second, we certify our closed session. Any comments, any concerns, shouldn't be, since it was a closed session?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Next item on our agenda is a special presentation dealing with the fire department ladder truck replacement borrowing. Someone from Davenport has a presentation for us.
Counsel here for us, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is nice to see you this evening as always. Again, Kyle Lucks with Davenport. We always appreciate being here. So, Mr. Mayor, we have up on the screen here a presentation all tied into financing a fire truck. I'm not sure there's a more technical term for it than that, but the ladder truck specifically that's in your budget, in your capital program. And so the time really has come by virtue of your staff to move forward with the financing for that and really here to talk about that process, et cetera. On page number one, just in terms of a little bit of background, not much, but the city has, and I think members of council, you understand this, and for the public, has a very long track record at this point of excellent financial stewardship. So we have excellent credit ratings, we have a double or a triple A credit rating from Standard and Poor's, which is the highest we can have, and a double A too from Moody's. So everything we're talking about this evening is set up purposely to make sure we can continue to demonstrate to the rating agencies that we'll be in as good a shape in the future as we've done in the past. And those credit ratings mean that we're able to borrow at the most cost-effective rates in the market and thus save the taxpayer money. So I'll say that on the front end, just so everything we're talking about takes that into consideration, meaning making sure we can maintain, if not maybe even enhance, those credit ratings. So again, roughly $2 million is the amount we're talking about in terms of the size of the financing of the borrowing. Again, all planned within your budget, so nothing new or surprising in that way. Planned for long in advance, the city has a very good track record of, call it measuring twice and cutting once when it comes to actually doing the financing. And so what you're seeing here tonight is really the result of planning during the early kind of colder months of the year as your budget process was being developed, obviously budget adopted, and now here to sort of take the next step and actually go out and obtain that financing. So we'll talk about that on page two, goals and objectives. We'll do a little bit of background, but not too much. Always making sure that we can maintain those ratings that are so critical to the city and the financial policy guidelines. We'll show you that visually in a couple pages and just demonstrate how the city maintains compliance with its policies, with its financing incorporated. Our existing debt here on page number three, we call this the tax-supported debt of the city. What that means is that's the debt that's paid from our general tax revenues.
We're reconvening from our closed session, and we need to certify that, please, so we need a motion to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed session to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by council.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made second, we certify our closed session. Any comments, any concerns, shouldn't be, since it was a closed session? Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Next item on our agenda is a special presentation dealing with the fire department ladder truck replacement borrowing. Someone from Davenport has a presentation for us. Welcome.
Counsel here for us, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is nice to see you this evening, as always. Again, Kyle Lucks with Davenport. We always appreciate being here. So, Mr. Mayor, we have up on the screen here a presentation all tied into financing a fire truck. I'm not sure there's a more technical term for it than that, but the ladder truck specifically that's in your budget, in your capital program, and so the time really has come by virtue of your staff to move forward with the financing for that and really here to talk about that, the process, et cetera. On page number one, just in terms of a little bit of background, not much, but the city has, and I think members of council, you understand this, and for the public, has a very long track record at this point of excellent financial stewardship. So, we have excellent credit ratings, we have a double or a triple A credit rating from Standard and Poor's, which is the highest we can have, and a double A two from Moody's. So, everything we're talking about this evening is set up purposely to make sure we can continue to demonstrate to the rating agencies that we'll be in as good a shape in the future as we've done in the past, and those credit ratings mean that we're able to borrow at the most cost-effective rates in the market and thus save the taxpayer money. So, I'll say that on the front end, just so everything we're talking about takes that into consideration, meaning making sure we can maintain, if not maybe even enhance, those credit ratings. So, again, roughly $2 million is the amount we're talking about in terms of the size of the financing of the borrowing. Again, all planned within your budget, so nothing new or surprising in that way, planned for long in advance. The city has a very good track record of, call it, measuring twice and cutting once when it comes to actually doing the financing. And so, what you're seeing here tonight is really the result of planning during the early kind of colder months of the year as your budget process was being developed, obviously budget adopted, and now here to sort of take the next step and actually go out and obtain that financing. So, we'll talk about that on page two, goals and objectives. We'll do a little bit of background, but not too much, always making sure that we can maintain those ratings that are so critical to the city and the financial policy guidelines. We'll show you that visually in a couple pages and just demonstrate how the city maintains compliance with its policies with this financing incorporated. Our existing debt here on page number three, we call this the tax-supported debt of the city. What that means is that's the debt that's paid from our general tax revenues, not our sewer enterprise fund that's set separate and fully self-supporting, except purposely not counted here. What you see is a total of about $36 million. All of the debt that's outstanding right now is fixed rate and paid just like a mortgage. So, as you hear and think about maybe in the news, interest rates and they're fluctuating, our existing debt is fixed rate, it does not move until such time as we as a city, maybe we want to go change something and refinance in the future. It also is paid in set increments, so again, just like a mortgage, each and every year we're paying that principal down, which creates the capacity to take on new projects as you're doing right now. So, the way we would go about obtaining the financing for this fire truck, we call it a direct bank loan. It's something the city's done many times in the past with great success. It basically means that we, working on your behalf, with your staff and bond counsel and Sam Zanderson, will go out and competitively bid this to local banks, to national banks, regional banks. Everybody gets the same shake at it, everybody gets to see the same thing and put it in a competitive proposal. So, that's what we call a direct bank loan. By virtue of doing that, we're able to bring back to you over the course of about the next 30 days, the results of that, so at your July meeting, we'll have the results that you can take action on. We'll talk about that schedule here in the next couple pages. One of the things we like here, just a couple advantages of a direct bank loan, but importantly, number six, bank loans tend to have very flexible prepayment provisions, and so that's important as we think about the lifespan of any particular loan over the years the city's been able to take advantage of refinancing for lower interest rates. We don't see that in the current situation, but if you take yourself out two, five, 10 years, we'll likely be in a position, although no guarantee, but likely be in a position we could be looking at even refinancing for savings purposes. So, we like the ability that bank loans typically have to have very flexible prepayment provisions and gives us as a city, gives you as a council, a lot of options as you think, not just about next year, but what does the future look like in terms of managing the various loans. On page number six, just give you a little bit of a visual in terms of interest rates. You've probably seen a lot of this in the news, but want to give you some perspective. What this page is showing is tax-exempt borrowing rates. So, we as a city, when we go finance governmental projects, whether it's a school, a fire station, a fire truck, we're able to do that at a tax-exempt interest rate. We basically get a lower interest rate by virtue of that. So, that's what this chart is showing. It's a long-term average and index. Left-hand side of the page shows you all the way back to 1980, so basically last 40, 42 years, 43 years, and what you see is that currently, when you compare yourself to that kind of perspective, we're in a very favorable borrowing environment. You take your eye to the graph on the right-hand side, in terms of what's transpired over the last year or two, certainly we're higher than we were during the all-time lows of the kind of immediate post-pandemic crisis time period, but that was very abnormal and it was never sort of reasonable to expect, nor were we want it to be in a situation where rates were that low for that long. And so, just from a perspective, long-term borrowing rate's still very favorable. The other corollary to that, that isn't necessarily in this presentation, but is a positive, is your ability as a city to actually earn some interest on the dollars you have in the bank is much, much greater than it was the last couple of years. So, we've talked about that, obviously, with manager and staff, whereby your fund balance and those financial policies you have on the fund balance side is very important to making sure we can maintain our credit ratings, and given that these short-term rates are higher, you can actually earn some dollars, if a fairly material amount, when you look at the cash balances that are deposited with banks, et cetera. So, we just offer that perspective in terms of how we think about things, a little globally and holistically. So, we'll show you a couple pages here of what we call planning estimates. Basically, everything you've seen here was incorporated in your budget, so we'll just give you a little bit of that, and then we'll bring you back the actual results in about 30 days. But we're assuming a $2 million cost. We've planned at a four-and-a-half percent interest rate. That should be about on the market. Couple of years ago, that was certainly well above the market, but things have evolved, so we should be somewhere in around that range. We'll know that answer by the time we come back to you. A repayment term of 15 years, so the entire loan would be paid off over that 15-year time period. We're not experts in necessarily rolling stock of, you know, a fire nature. We understand these types of projects, trucks, if you will, have a very long useful life. So, a repayment of 15 years is, A, reasonable, and B, arguably on the conservative side. Mention on the front end, some of our financial policies, just want to show you visually here, how we continue to comply with two of the most important financial policies. On the left-hand side, debt service to expenditures, that's a cash flow kind of measurement metric. We have as a city a self-imposed, which is a good thing, policy that says we don't want that ratio to go anything above 10%. That means we don't want more than 10 pennies out of every dollar in the budget going to make a debt service payment, and you can see there, we're hovering in and around nine. No surprise, certainly we've made some major investments over the last couple of years. On the right-hand side is our debt versus assessed value. That's just really a measurement of our total tax base relative to the amount of debt outstanding. We have a policy to be at no more than 3%. We're hovering right now at 2%. As your assessed value goes up, that ratio looks even stronger. As construction goes on next door and your assessed value grows that way, that makes that ratio look stronger. So, all of these various metrics, A, we're in compliance with them, and B, we would expect they're going to be stronger in the future, given all the activity going on in the city. So, in terms of our next steps, where we'll go from here with council's kind of collective blessing, extreme wealth, what we really do is as early as tomorrow, we've kind of had this teed up, but wanted to bring it before you. We'll have an RFP out to the banks, basically tomorrow and next day, so you can start looking at that, going through their process, going through that competitive bidding process, basically over the balance of the month. So, by the time we get to the 29th of June, those responses will come in to us, we'll share them with Randy, with Tanya, with Tara, everybody, kind of work up our stuff, working with your legal counsel, and be in a position to be back to you as a council on July 10th to present all this information and allow you to take action to move forward. There will also be a series of public hearings that are required just by virtue of the Public Finance Act. Sam Zanderson, your longtime bond counsel, will help us kind of get all that teed up, so you may see those ads in the paper over the course of the next month, just a requirement of the way that we borrow money in Virginia, and so that will all be done over the course of the next month. So, really, from council's perspective, we'll be working through all of this. Look forward to seeing you again, barring any questions, anything that we can explain further at your July 10th meeting. Again, with all the results and known interest rates, prepayment provisions, et cetera, to talk in more detail that you could then take some action on. The idea then is we'd be able to close, basically by the end of July, have the funds in hand such that when that truck is delivered, the dollars are there, we're not having to come out of our own sort of reserves to make that payment. And so, with that, I will pause. Mayor, members of council, any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any additional questions for Kyle? We discussed this on July the 10th. We've already established the need for this ladder truck. Then we've seen the financing and the schedule for the financing and when we make that final decision, we have established the need, but if you don't have questions of Kyle, we'll just follow the calendar and move forward.
I have one question.
Sure.
Okay. As you know, and you already said it, this is the second of two fairly large things that we're financing right now in the recent past. Do you see that with this addition of the $2 million, any impact on our credit rating?
I don't. I'll tell you why. So, two reasons. One is this chart here whereby we can demonstrate to the rating agencies that we are very much in compliance with our self-imposed policies, and those policy levels are levels that they've seen, and they're in line with the stuff that they like to see. So, that's the first reason why. The second reason is your budget, to the credit council and everyone, is structurally balanced, and so we can also demonstrate to the rating agencies and the lenders that we proactively thought about borrowing these dollars and we built it into our budget, and thus we have what we call the debt affordability, meaning we already put the dollars in the budget, we know it's coming, and we have the debt capacity, which means we can show that we comply with the various policies.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Kyle? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here, Kyle.
Thank you. Good to see you as always.
We'll see you soon.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's move on to our audience of visitors. If there's anyone in our audience who'd like to address council on any issue at this time, we'd be delighted to hear from you. I don't see anybody, so we'll move on to approval of our minutes, the regular session May 22nd, 2023.
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion made second to approve our minutes, regular session May 22nd, 2023. Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Emmett?
So, if I watch the meeting online, can I go ahead and... Okay. Aye. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right. Thanks, Kim. Let's move on to old business. Ordinance authorized the city manager to enter into a contract for sale of public property located in the middle of Legacy Community, another item that this council has discussed thoroughly. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you may recall, beginning back in April, council authorized us to move forward on your behalf to solicit bids for this piece of property, which is approximately slightly less than three-quarters of an acre, and it is inside the otherwise larger footprint of the Legacy Development. We had a public hearing to receive those sealed bids on May 8th. We had one bidder. The Legacy developer was that bidder. They offered $100,000 with a couple of contingencies. Council considered that, and Mr. Moore took the lead in putting together the contract. I'll let him speak to it, but I would simply say before he does that we have been, and particularly Wayne, in close discussion with them, and if you're ready to move forward, I think on the rest of everybody's position, including the developer, they are also ready to move forward on this document as presented this evening. I'll let Wayne explain.
Okay. Wayne?
As you recall, we made sort of a counteroffer back to them on the conditions that we wanted, but they accepted. They have until the end of November to actually close and complete the purchase, which would give them an opportunity to take any other steps that they need, such as their master plan and that type of thing. If the whole deal falls through, then they forfeit the $5,000 deposit that they made. They also, in the contract, agreed to reimburse the city advertising expenses, which is part of the transaction, and so I see no reason that we not go forward based on all the discussions we've had. And I believe that kind of set that forward.
Thank you, Wayne.
I think Wayne, it just told us exactly what we talked about it, I think at our last meeting, and the items, you know, how we wanted that thing to work, and he's done a good job getting it done. Do you want to say something, Carrie?
Oh, no, sir. I was just going to make a motion.
Okay. Okay, I'm ready.
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance of the city of Pic辛, Virginia, granting the purchase of publicly-owned property of unimproved .77 acres located in the middle of Legacy Development.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We have a motion made second that we adopt the ordinance. Any other concerns, questions, comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right. Thanks, Kim. Let's move on to new business. The first item is a resolution making an appointment to the school board. Someone have a motion and a name inserted?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution adopting, appointing the following persons to the school board. For Central, Ms. Shannon Martin, and at large, Mr. Michael DeBeau's. Both terms expire 30 June 2026.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion made second that we adopt the resolution with those names inserted. Any comments, questions? Not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Item two on the new business resolution making an appointment to the Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board. I think someone had some names.
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution appointing Lieutenant Ty Farrington to the Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board, and his term will expire on 30 June 2026.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion made second we adopt the resolution with Ty Farrington's name inserted. Any comments, questions, concerns about that? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right. Thanks, Kim. Item three is a resolution making an appointment to the Colonial Behavioral Health Board. Someone have a name?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution appointing Dr. Dawn Imaid to the Colonial Behavioral Health Board. Her term expires June 30, 2026.
Okay. If we have a second, we will move on.
A second.
Okay. So, we have a motion made second we adopt the resolution with that name inserted. Any concerns, comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim.
Prior motion, I believe you called, you did call Councilwoman Bunting's name for the vote.
For the VASAP program?
Which one, Wayne? I'm sorry.
I believe on the vote for Lieutenant Ty Farrington.
Virginia Alcohol Safety Action.
I believe she called... I don't believe she called you. I believe she did not. You did not call the roll correctly. I would ask that that call be made again.
Okay. Sure. Let's do it. Let's just do another resolution in a second. Carrie, you want to do that again?
Okay. I propose a resolution appointing Lieutenant Ty Farrington to the Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board, the term expiring 30 June 2026.
Okay. Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Did we finish the Colonial Health? Did we do that vote?
Yes, you did that one.
All right. Let's move on to item four under new business resolution making an appointment to the Workforce Development Consortium.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I propose a resolution appointing Vice Mayor Carrie Freeman to the Workforce Development Consortium, term expiring June 30th of 2024.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
All right. Motion made second we adopt the resolution with the vice mayor's name inserted.
Is it 2024 or 2025? It's two years. One year? Oh, okay.
Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six with one abstention.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Item five, a resolution making an appointment to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution appointing Mayor Gordon C. Helsel Jr. to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, and J. Randall Wheeler, ex officio member. Both terms expire 31 December 2024.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion made second we adopt the resolution with my name inserted, and Randy, there's my partner. How about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All righty, item six, it's an ordinance making additional transfer for fiscal year 2023, authorizing the city manager to issue a letter of intent and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract to purchase a 2024 AEV Type 1 X Series Medic Unit.
You did that in a single breath, which is... I don't think you need to cut your physical. We'll just send a clip of that to the doctor.
Okay, good deal.
Italian Chief Youngs, he's representing.
Hey, John, how you doing, pal?
Good, sir, how are you?
Good, we're doing good.
Good evening to everyone. I'm just here to speak on behalf of this in case everybody has any questions with some new faces here. We have a multi-point ordinance that will result in purchasing us a new medic unit for the fire department. It should replace our oldest truck, which is a little over 20 years old now. In FY '23 capital projects, the city appropriated $175,000 towards the purchase of this vehicle. We applied for a 50/50 matching grant with the state. We were not successful. Most of the grant monies are not seeming to come to municipalities anymore. They're supporting more the rural areas. We're starting to see a trend of. So then, on May 8th of '23, council appropriated an additional $175,000 towards this purchase, bringing us up to 350. In the time that we've started this project, the cost of the ambulance has increased due to price increases across the board. The new total is $393,247. So it requires an additional $43,247 over the appropriation. Finances said that that is available in undesignated projects in the Capital Projects Fund. The last two vehicles that we purchased from this company, we've been very, very happy with their craftsmanship. When we do have issues, they have an agreement with a vendor right in York County that we can take it to, and the one time we had an issue that they couldn't fix, AEV came to us, picked up the vehicle, took it back to Carolina, and took care of everything. They've really stood behind their products, and we can purchase with them through the HGAC contract, so we're very happy to stick with them. So, the ordinance, also completion of this project is going to finally finish a multi-year project that we started to exceed the newest federal patient restraint guidelines. So this truck will ensure that all four of our ambulances now will have the automated power load system with the power stretcher, which is going to bring us back into compatibility with all of our surrounding jurisdictions. So, the purpose of the ordinance, we're going to ask for a transfer within the Capital Projects Fund to $43,247 to complete the purchase. Authorize the city manager to immediately issue a letter of intent to AEV so that we can lock in that pricing and not see any further increases. And then, on July 1st, on or after July 1st of '23, issue into a contract to purchase this 2024 Type 1 ambulance from AEV. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Go on before you get it, John.
They are currently estimating that we should see delivery in calendar year '24, and they're not willing to go much more detailed than that.
Well, nobody knows, you know, the need for these units more than you guys do. You operate them, you run them, and you do it very professionally. Two things, I guess one of the things that, you know, we're responsible for is the safety of our people in our community, number one. And so, you know, I don't think this council has any questions regarding any dollars that we need to appropriate to make sure that we've got the best that we can get. And I think that's what you've done. So, I appreciate that. Any other comments? Okay, if not, there's an ordinance prepared, right?
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance making additional transfers for fiscal year 2023, authorizing the city manager to issue a letter of intent and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract to purchase a 2024 AEV Type 1 X Series Medic Unit.
Okay.
I didn't do that near as good as the mayor.
You did great. Okay, we have a motion made second, and I think I heard a second, David.
Sir.
Okay, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. John, thank you so much. Michael, thank you. We appreciate the information that you... All right. Our chief. We appreciate this, the update on your deputy chief. Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, let's move on to item seven, an ordinance making an additional transfer in fiscal year 2023 within the Capital Projects Fund for Two Tree Park. This is an item that I think I spoke with everybody on council about. Yes, ma'am? Good evening. Good evening.
To make your consideration as a transfer for the Two Tree Park, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board provided city council with an update on the community input and improvement plan on this park at the April 10th, 2023 work session. The advisory board took a large list of the community wants and determined that a phased in approach for the park would be the best option to provide immediate benefits to the community and allows additional time to research for future plans. So the first phase includes a parking lot, bike rack, picnic shelter, walking trail, and signage. So in order to begin this first phase, we are requesting city council to appropriate $70,000 from the undesignated projects account in the Capital Projects Fund. This money will allow for staff to enter into a contract to construct a parking lot, which is estimated to cost about $35,000, and provide the signage for the park. Once the parking lot is complete, staff will focus on the other items included in the first phase plan. Attached is an appropriation for city council's consideration to transfer $70,000 in fiscal year 2023 within the Capital Projects Fund for the Two Tree Park. And I would be happy to answer any questions. Dave, Cal, and also...
Any questions, Keith?
Yeah, the $35,000 is going toward the signs of the parking lot. Will the other $35,000 of the 70 be enough to cover items like the shelter and the trails?
We believe so, but it might need some additional funds.
I would, not to contradict that, but we believe so, but we've not bid any of the rest of that stuff out. So I did want to say, you know, this is sort of our best guess, and we don't... But it truly is a guess. We'll refine this estimate as we go forward. And once we get the parking lot in, then next phase, it's already been working on is, you know, the sighting of the shelter. And when we know where it's going to be, then we know how to connect it with a walking path of some kind, so there'll be a paved surface from the lot to the shelter. And I think it'll definitely take us there. And depending upon how we construct that path, we're going to be close. We also are working already on the landscaping plan out front, the parking area, the bike rack that will go along with it, as well as the signage. So what this, what we're asking is the money to begin to implement that plan, and for the small things, to be able to go and continue to do it without having to come back and asking for $250 for a bike, you know, $150 for a sign, that type of thing. We will report back to you regularly.
Your best guess is good. All right, any other questions? Right. Thank you, ma'am. Great job. Keith, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance making an additional transfer in fiscal year 2023 within improvement focused for Two Tree Park.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made second we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments? Okay, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Item eight, it's an ordinance updating Chapter 24, Article 3, Division 2, Section 74-113, 74-115, and 74-116 relating to the income limits and amount of exemptions and deferrals. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, our commissioner of the revenue, Joe Cachamelia, is here. He certainly can speak to this. I also wanted to just let you know that this was something that was specifically contemplated in your budget, including the fiscal impacts of this was also forecasted in your budget. Joe, you want to come and please just throw it?
Good evening, Mayor.
Hey, Joe.
Basically, what we're doing is just increasing the amount of exemption, for tax exemption, from $2,200 to $2,500. That's the main reason this is in here. The sliding scale of exemptions is based, has limits of 25, 50, 75, and 100% is on that scale, and that is tied to the Consumer Price Index, which we voted on in 2011 to do that. So that's just a matter, of course. That's also in here as well, but I just wanted to mention that that's something that we do every year. And the reason for this increase is we haven't looked at it in quite some time. As you all know, the inflation rate was higher than what we've seen in the last 10 years or so, year-over-year inflation rate. And so this ordinance change was basically proposed to address that. And if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to...
Is it 25?
25.
Is it 100%?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the maximum that any household could defer or be exempted.
Okay. That's great programming, by the way. Any questions, Joe? Don't see any, thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance amending Chapter 74, Article 3, Division 2, Section 74-113 eligibility generally, Section 74-115 amount of exemption, and Section 74-116 amount of deferral of the code of ordinances of the City of Pecos.
Well done. Second. All right, we have a motion made second we adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or concerns, any comments? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Item nine is an ordinance for fiscal year 2023 for General Fund, Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Law Enforcement Equipment Grant Funding. Chief, good to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor. The numbers welcome for the council members. Good to see you guys. The last year in the Virginia General Assembly, there was allocation of the federal ARPA funding and of the allotment sent to the Commonwealth of Virginia. The legislature sent $75 million to the Department of Criminal Justice Services specifically to be allocated to localities for the acquisition of law enforcement, equipment, and technology. And the police department made application through that program for the maximum amount that we were eligible for of $162,000. That'll allow us to acquire two fully equipped patrol vehicles, some technology and equipment that'll enhance our abilities in investigations, and also some additional equipment to enhance the daily operations of the Uniform Patrol Division. On May the 11th, we were notified that our application was approved for the full amount of $162,000. There is no match, and so before you tonight is the ordinance for consideration, authorizing city manager to accept the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Law Enforcement Equipment Grant and to appropriate the grant funds in the Capital Projects Fund for fiscal year 2023.
Congratulations on receiving the grant. We ought to do this one just as fast as we can.
Don't let us avoid.
Any questions of the chief?
Will you be maintaining the, is this replacing any vehicles? Will you maintain them, or?
This will actually increase about two, and that'll coincide with the SRO positions that were...
Excellent.
No questions? All righty, Ms. Kim? Excuse me, we need a motion for the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance for fiscal year 2023 for General Fund, Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Law Enforcement Equipment Grant Fund.
Second.
All right, motion made second we adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or concerns? I don't hear any, so Ms. Kim?
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. It's good. Item 10, it's an ordinance proposing changes to the city Chapter 38, Article 2, Section 38-31, Fire Prevention.
We'll let the chief do this one, sir.
The fire chief is here.
I didn't screw up, say deputy chief this time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and not to be outdone by the police chief, I want to welcome our newest member of the city council as well. Tonight, I'm here to present a resolution in regards to our state Fire Prevention Code. Being a new chief, I've also been to new classes, and I did learn in this class that not only is it my responsibility as the fire marshal, but with that, it's my responsibility to make sure this statewide fire prevention code is always up to date. So, with that being said, I found out during the class that a lot of jurisdictions are moving to this type of resolution. As the state fire prevention code changes, with this resolution, it will automatically be recognized by the city. And I thought it would be a good idea to do that. That way, we're always covered, and there's never any questions about the state fire That way, we're always covered, and there's never any questions about the state Fire Prevention Code. They do the updates frequently between the State of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Department of Housing, so that's where the updates come from. So, if there's any questions or concerns, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions of the chief regarding this ordinance that we are about to adopt? Don't see any, pal. Who will ask for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance proposing changes to city code, Chapter 38, Article 2, Section 38-31, Fire Prevention Code.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made second, we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments, any questions? Okay, Ms. Kim.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to our last item. It's an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2023 for the general fund. Just come in.
She's hard to miss, isn't that bright?
I tell you, she's on fire.
All right, so we have three additional revenue items to discuss for additional appropriation in the general fund for fiscal year 2023. The first is, the library has received additional donations. I know we bring these periodically, but they got $5,770 since the last time I brought this to you, which was primarily from the friends of the library. So that's a great donation for them. The second item is, if you recall, city council approved participation in the nationwide settlements with certain opioid distributors at the December 13th, 2021, and the February 28th, 2023 meetings. This year so far, we've received $55,444 in these settlement dispersments. The city will continue to receive these settlement dispersments for the next 17 years. This amount for this year was higher because one distributor front-loaded, so we won't get as much in future years. And we are working to determine the best use of these funds because we must use them for opioid abatement efforts. And the last item is, the city received $17,414 from the monitoring fund of a class action settlement agreement, which are intended to pay for PCP, PCB sampling and/or mitigation efforts as part of compliance with that applicable law. And the community development staff are working on the best use of these funds to meet that settlement agreement requirement. So attached, you have an appropriation for city council's consideration to appropriate the additional $78,628 in the fiscal year 2023 general fund, and I would be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
We, I just got notice, I think on Thursday, that there's been an additional opioid settlement with three more companies. So we will be getting another boost to this fund, and an upfront boost with a long period after that.
Great.
This year. I expect it early fall.
Okay, any questions? Everybody that's come, that's spent the night, been getting money?
Of course, so far. Are they good?
That's great. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance making an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2023 in the general fund.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made second, we adopt the ordinance. Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Ah.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, comments to city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Three items this evening. One, I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Bunting and Councilwoman Emmett for spending considerable time with us over the last couple of weeks. We really enjoyed that. Hope that's the first of many dialogues. I was reflecting as the meeting was unfolding this evening, how different it is from when I first started here 14 years and 11 days ago. At that time, we were dealing with the recession, we were going through a process of laying off employees and eliminating taken positions, and cutting about everything we could possibly cut while still managing to function. And since that time, and sitting back this evening, with your approval, making important investments on 20 years pieces of apparatus like a ladder truck, and two more police cars, and final stage of this stage of our ambulance replacement and updating process, the seed money for Two Tree Park, I just want to note, we've come a long way together, and that lends more excitement to where we're going next, also together. And lastly, you know, each of us has kind of a bucket list of things we hope to achieve, and then you have a list on the side of things that would also be nice. And in that vein, as previously reported in a weekly report, Public Works has taken the lead on putting forward grant applications, and actually, it's one for two thanks, for the state's abandoned boat removal fund, and we've learned today that it has cleared all the administrative hurdles going with the recommendation of approval to the VMRC later this month. So if we are successful, like we expect we will be, the two derelict boats, one on each side of Mystic Point, will be our target, and by fall, they'll be up and gone. And that's all I have.
All right. Great report. And one of the reasons that we've come as far as we've come, Randy, is because of you and your staff. In fact, that's probably the major, major reason. So, congratulations to you and all the folks that are part of this city. Just do a magnificent job.
I want to second that.
Okay. I want to counsel directors, I'm gonna use, I'm gonna go first tonight for a change, and